And with that said, I will call to order the City of Urbana Council's Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, June 12th, 2017. If the clerk would please call the roll. Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Woo.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, May 22nd, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any further discussion, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. Public input. I have one card from Bishop, oh yeah, Bishop King James Underwood, and this is in relationship to Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. They choose not to address the members, but ask that their position, that they are still concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem, and also Eldris Melinda Carr was also continued, offers her continued concern about Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues. They want equity and discuss, they're concerned about the issues, the equity and the historic impact. Thank you. Say any other public input? Anyone else wish to address this body? Yes, sir.
Aaron, very quickly, so Jason did some research on some timers, and we can now display a timer on your screen in front of you. There's a countdown timer here that will run, so people, if they're doing a presentation, the presentation will cover this up. We're still looking for something that might float, but at least for the general public speaking, they will have a timer that they can keep track of on the computer screen and on the screens around the room.
Can we make that really big on the computer screen out there?
Maybe.
Oh, let's a little bit bigger, I don't know.
We will play with that.
Who starts that timer? Would that be you, or does it? Ah, yes, indeed.
I actually now can actually remotely help people with the computer out there as well, which is a nice little feature.
Yes, Eric.
Are you going to start timing council members?
I can do that at your request. It is in the rules, which we're going to discuss June 26th.
Okay, yeah, maybe after we discuss that, we can decide whether we would like you to put a muzzle on us.
I can share my duct tape.
Oh, wow, okay, don't get me going on there. All right, presentations, presentations. We have a presentation from the UBA. That is the Urbana Business Association.
Okay, so my name is Paris Bolderota, Executive Director of the UBA. I want to thank everybody for letting me come out tonight and speak. My purpose of this presentation, as you all know, is that UBA is coming to the end of our three-year agreement with the city, so I'm here to present on the UBA what we've been doing over the last year, what some future goals are, and then request funding for the coming year. So, the UBA, what are we made up of? A quick recap, our mission is to serve our members by promoting Urbana as a dynamic place to live, work, and do business. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(6), and we are made up of 12 board members who are member businesses within this community. And our mantra is, when we all work together, we all prosper together. So you guys know that we put on a lot of community events and different events throughout the year, but we also sponsor several community events and organizations. So just to name a few, the CU Jazz Festival, the Boneyard Arts Festival, Food Truck Rally, Urbana First Fridays, and Urbana Grand Prix. And these are either cash or in-kind contributions that we give to the organizations. So I'm going to talk a bit about the events that we host. So we have Market in the Square. That was formerly the Holiday Market and Middle Market, which we rebranded into Market in the Square this year. And we did that so it was a more cohesive branding for the outdoor market and the indoor market. So we take over when the outdoor market is complete, and we start in November, and we go through April each year. And it's basically that, the indoor farmer's market where crafters, our producers, bakers, community organizations can come together and market their products. The other thing I want to mention that last year and previous years, we were netting $14,000 per market, and this year because of the rebranding and sponsorships and different things that we did to improve the market, we are actually netting $25,000 a year now. We did the world's shortest but best St. Patrick's Day Parade this year. Again, it was a lot of fun. We had a few people march in the parade with us. We started at Sipyard with a pre-party, went down the block, it lasted three or four minutes. Afterwards, everyone joined the parade, marched down, and then we headed back to Sipyard again. So it was a lot of fun, and partnered with 92.5 for that. Uncork. So we actually just finished Uncork this past Saturday. I'm still recovering, but it went really well. The weather was perfect. We have Illinois Wineries, live music. We had live cooking demonstrations this year. We were able to hold it in Meadowbrook Park as well, which we really appreciate. The park just took a lot in us to do that. People loved the setting. We had a lot of people come out for that. Giveaways, food trucks, family-friendly. So, yeah, we had a really good time doing it, and we're looking forward to next year as well. Sweet Corn Festival. I know we've all heard a lot about sweet corn and what we have coming up this year. Little history, it's Champaign County's largest free annual festival. It was started in 1975 in the Bucie parking lot. Over 50,000 people attend each year. Approximately 20,000 ears of corn are consumed each year. Over 70 vendors. We have live music, kids' activities, and a car show. And then, of course, the changes that we have coming up. We wanted to make it a more local festival, so we want to ensure that we are including our local restaurants and our downtown bars into the festival. We lowered local vendor pricing. For food vendors, we're only going to charge a flat fee and not take a percentage of their sales. Local entertainment. We have a virtually ticketless system, so the only thing that you'll have to do is pay tickets for beer and for corn. Doing local entertainment, more family-friendly activities. We're actually working with Cranert Center right now, partnering with them to bring in some new activities. Corn-themed activities for food, games, cornhole tournament, et cetera. So we're really want to take it back to its roots and recreate it into a family-friendly local festival, and we've had a lot of really good feedback so far. So with that being said, our first request for funding would be for the 2017 Sweet Corn Festival for $15,000, and that's what we have been receiving in the past. And it's my understanding that that is currently budgeted into the city's new fiscal year as well. So now that I've talked about our events, I'm going to go into some more membership information. So let's talk about our member events. We have 140 member businesses, and we offer networking events. So we have our Connections Over Coffee and our Connections Over Cocktails, and those are where our businesses can come together, the community can come together to network and get to know each other, and also allow people to understand and get to know the UBA and who we are as well. On the flip end of that, it's a really good way for the businesses to showcase and market themselves. What happens is they sign up to become a host location, and we provide all the food, we provide all the beverage, and we do all of the marketing to get the people in the door. They just have to host it, open their doors, and let people in. We do ribbon cuttings. We also host workshops. And so what we do with the workshops is our member businesses or our local experts, instead of bringing people in from the outside, we use our local experts to put these workshops on, so they're providing valuable information to their fellow business members while also promoting their business at the same time. Member services, so this is going to be more in the marketing and promotion end of things. We do co-op advertising that allows our members to purchase marketing and advertising at discounted rates. We have our Talk of the Town newsletter, where members can use that to promote or put ads in there. We have our social media. So amongst all of our social media platform and accounts, we have over 20,000 followers, and our members are also allowed to submit any type of events or information or sales or whatever it may be to promote their business, and we'll promote that for them. We also manage the banner program for all the banner poles around downtown as well. We have our sponsors that we want to thank. We have over 45 businesses that contribute to the UBA throughout the year in cash and in-kind, so we just want to say thank you to them, because we would not be able to do all the things that we do without them. And finally, I'm going to talk about our future goals. So I've been talking about this for a while, but a Give to Go Grow program. I really want to be able to start giving back to the community and our businesses in a bigger way by offering scholarships and grants, more elite marketing programs, increased business enrichment services, which are, for example, workshops, and then create new events. So a lot of events that are themed or geared towards foodies, a community, family, significant life events, culture, tech, and business. And how I see this going is these events, the net income from these events will be able to then fund the Give to Go Grow program. So lastly, now that I've gone through everything that the UBA does, I have the funding request here for the following year, one-year contract. What I am showing here is the trend over the last four years, relationship between the city and the UBA for funding. Our last contract was a three-year contract, and it decreased by $5,000 each year. So we've received $10,000 less from the city. So it's my understanding that we will be getting a cut of $14,000 this year, which is not fun, and we're not excited about it, but we understand the way the city is moving forward and the reasons why, so we are accepting it. So as I see, staff funding would go down to $21,000, operational would be 35, so we would be down to $56,000, which would be a total of $24,000 over the last four years that we will have decreased. So my request was, to recap, would be sweet corn for $15,000, $56,000 for staff and operations, which again is my understanding is in the budget for the city already at this time, and that you guys vote to move forward to take it to council next Monday to vote on our funding as well. So I want to thank everybody for your time and invite you again to our next Connections Over Coffee on the 27th of June. Be hosted by Cunningham Children's Home. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Any questions?
Jared.
Paris, I just was curious about Market in the Square. Do you coordinate with the city from Market on the square to coordinate with vendors and everybody who's involved in that, and share the lists and pricing and all that kind of stuff?
We do.
Or do you operate it totally separately?
It's marketed separately. It's handled, you know, the market at the square is handled by the city, by Natalie, and then we handle the indoor ones. We do coordinate, and we talk, and, but we still have, we keep everything separate, but there is crossover, and we do get advice from each other and things like that. But the pricing is different. Some of the rules are different. Some of them are the same, just depending.
Cool, okay, just curious.
Sure.
Mary Alice.
I had a question about your workshops. So are the workshops only open to members, or are they open to the community?
At this time, we have them open to members, because we want that to be a member benefit. So at this point, it's open to members.
So have you thought about extending certain special ones, like How to Get a Business Started, like special topics to the community?
Yeah, 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 we have a whole list of projects that we're working on, so yeah, that would be definitely something that we could talk on. Sometimes those topics are better handled by other organizations, like the EDC or something like that, so we would refer them to that organization. But just depending who we had come on, that's definitely a possibility.
And one other idea I was thinking about was a mentorship program, in terms of having, you know, kind of established businesses that we have here in Urbana to kind of pair them up with new businesses that are forming. I was wondering if you guys had anything similar to that, formal or informal?
We do not, no, but that's a good idea.
Mayor Marlin.
Do you anticipate any of your event revenue going to support more of the operational expenses as time goes on and your events are successful and actually generate revenue?
Yeah, I think my first goal is to be able to do more business-related services, but then as we continue to grow, then eventually we would be able to do some more administrative expenses and be able to cover those costs as well. That's the goal in the future.
Eric.
Is it, or would it be possible without undue effort, to estimate how much sales tax revenue flows from your activities? That might be hard to do. So, but it would be, it's interesting, obviously, to us to think about that.
Well, I will know that. For Uncork, we used to partner with IgGVA on that event. Well, we broke that partnership and did it on our own this year, so we'll be handling all of the sales tax for that. So I'll know for specifically Uncork what the city's sales tax revenue generated would be, and I could bring that or email that to you guys, but when I finish the reporting in the next couple of weeks. That's the only one that I know that generates sales tax at this point.
Well, I'm thinking about something like, for example, there were, there were liquor taxes that were generated by the short St. Patrick's Day Parade.
Oh, you're just meaning just on the outskirts, and not specifically related to us, just everyone around does that?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of how much your activities-
Bring into the businesses, and then how that filters back to you guys.
How that filters back to us. I mean, what you do is wonderful, but a lot of the ways that it's wonderful are not quantifiable.
Yeah.
And, but, but that, if, and it's probably very hard to say, you know, precisely, but it would be really interesting to, if there are any ways to make estimates on different activities and how much they actually impact our revenue stream in that way. You know, I hate to be in a position of putting dollars and cents on everything, but we sort of have to do it.
That'd be interesting.
Any other questions? So I had a question that was along the same lines of what Eric just shared. And so UBA was partnering with other entities to do these, whether it's Sweet Corn and other things?
Just Uncork Wine Festival. So I, my understanding is, the first year of Uncork, they partnered with the Grapegrowers and Ventners Association to help bring the wineries in, since they had a relationship with them. But as it grew, I noticed that that relationship was not necessary, so we do not partner with them anymore.
Do I need to give the chair a way to ask questions? Not for questions? Thank you very much, Charlie, you're great, man. And so you alluded to this earlier. I've asked this question before, but I like to ask same questions over and over again sometimes. EDC versus the UBA. And when I say versus, I'm just saying, making a clear distinction between the two. Could you help me with that a little bit again?
So they do a lot of help for, with small businesses and businesses that are starting up, and they also help bring businesses to the community by promoting champagne Urbana. And they would probably be better to speak on this than I am, but they do more of like helping startup businesses, bringing businesses into the community, seeking them out, and they do like, I know a lot of big companies as well, like bringing them from the outside in. That's the best way for me to explain it. And you probably can explain that a lot better than I can.
So what about UBA then?
So what do we do? I feel what we do is we make Urbana a really exciting place to come, live, and work, and do business in. So with our community events that brings, let's see, there are some companies that don't necessarily have people coming through their doors. They're not retail, they're not restaurant, they're not bar, they're tech companies. So they're going to want to attract employees to the, to come live in Urbana. So that's one of our jobs, is to make Urbana an exciting place for these people to come live and work in our community. So that's one aspect of it. And then we're doing more marketing and promotional help and networking and connection and connecting these people together versus the bigger picture of everything.
But that's primarily for businesses, entities like that, right? Because like the workshop, you said, those are members-only workshops, basically, right?
Well, members are hosting them, but members and non-members can attend. So there's member and non-member pricing. So it's open to our whole community, but our members are the ones that are hosting them.
Oh, I thought from the question from Mary Alice, you were saying that the workshops were just for members.
I'm not sure, maybe I misunderstood. I thought the question was who was hosting them. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, members and non-members can definitely attend the workshops. I misunderstood.
Okay, all right.
I can add a little bit about the focus of the Champaign County Economic Development Corporation. The UBA focuses on, is Urbana-centric, and by the nature of the funding, most of the funding is from the TIF funds, which means it's centered actually in central Urbana. The Champaign County EDC has a regional focus. An example of one of the projects that they're collaborating on would be the promotion and growth of Willard Airport. So you probably heard the news last week that United Airlines has just started flights into Willard, where, well, EDC was one of a number of entities that worked very hard to put, to put that together and to show the community support for that. So the EDC takes a regional approach, collaborative approach. They also are the home of the, one of the Small Business Development Centers, the SBDCs. And you probably also heard that due to the budget crisis, many of the SBDCs have been closed around the state or consolidated. So Champaign still hosts one of the SBDC, Small Business Development Centers, and we, the City of Urbana, partners with the SBDC. So when we give out a grant to the, you know, the Small Business Development Grants that the city gives, one of the things that we require is that the recipients undergo counseling through SBDC or a number of other places, but SBDC is one of the places they go for business counseling. So that's a condition of getting the grants. And on the EDC board are representatives from various area communities, the county, the University of Illinois. So, so it's a, it's a, it's a broader-based economic development tool. Several years ago, their funding was cut in half, and it's been that way for four years, and so they're currently getting about $19,000 a year from the city, and that comes out of the general fund.
I appreciate the level of funding. I don't know if I was asking about the level of funding, but I know you've got to work on that, so it's okay. Okay, thank you very much. We have other questions for Paris, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one extra question. So when we met earlier, you had talked about what the city provides to UBA, and one of the things that I thought you had mentioned was the space that you guys currently use? Is that right?
Correct.
So the city gives you the space in order to function as an entity?
Correct.
Can you put any kind of dollar value on that?
If my memory serves me correctly, from our previous contract, I think it was $7,800 a year?
For rent, $7,800?
For rent and parking.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Bill.
So the previous three-year agreement just ended this fiscal year.
Yeah, so it'll be at the end of the year.
So should we think of this as kind of a bridge year to another three-year agreement? Is that what we're targeting?
I'm not sure.
You haven't talked with anybody about that yet? Okay.
I'm trying to get through this year.
Okay. Because it seemed like the three-year agreement worked pretty well. At least it gave both of us some long-term vision about what you'd be expecting over the years. So that in-kind stuff that the city does is already included in your staff funding or operational funding in this figure that is included in the budget, or is this cash amounts?
That's cash.
Okay.
It's all cash.
And then, it's kind of hard for me to follow in our budget, because it's separated out into different accounts, like some of it's coming from central TIF, and I only see, I see the $15,000 for downtown UBA festival marketing, which I guess is probably Sweet Corn. But last year, it was only $5,000. Did you get $15,000 for Sweet Corn last year? Okay, probably came from different accounts. Okay, thank you.
Jared.
So I've been, ever since I heard about the UBA when I was sitting in the audience a long time ago, curious about it. So it sounds like your, your three main missions are networking, marketing, and cultural enrichment, to some effects of the way like MBIA does events that are supposed to draw culture to town, downtown. Does that sound accurate?
I would say so, yes.
Okay, cool. Anything else that goes outside of those things, do you think it all pretty much falls under those?
I think it would, yeah, fall under those three categories at this time.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Just for a quick, I wouldn't say a point of order, but just to make sure our records are clear, who moved and seconded the minutes for us? Jared moved, Eric seconded.
I seconded, yes.
So moved by Jared Miller, seconded by Eric Jacobson. I can hear somebody in the back telling me to say the names of the people so that I understand. Okay, I got it.
Reminder to everybody there.
Reminder to everybody. Okay. The next up for a presentation is Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Public Works.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us come and present tonight. I'm Cynthia Hoyle. I am the current Chair of BPAC. It's been a short term of office, but that is the current job. And I have one of my fellow commission members here, which I will allow to introduce himself.
Jeff Marino, resident of the City of Urbana, member of BPAC.
So we were reviewing our bylaws this last year, and in the process of doing that, we discovered that the ordinance, which you see listed here, which created us in 2006, asked us to present an annual report, which we had not been doing. So we worked as a group on putting together an annual report to bring to you, and so that is why we are here tonight. So just a brief review of what we do, we were charged, this is a very brief synopsis of what's in the ordinance, that to advise the city council on how to make bicycling and walking viable modes of transportation for people in the city of Urbana. And so what we have done is we went through as a group collectively and talked about what we had accomplished over the last year. We looked at all of our meeting notes and minutes and pulled out the highlights for you, so that you could see some of what we've been doing. One of our primary functions is to review and provide recommendations on capital improvement and planning that is going on in the city related to walking and biking. So we did that, and then our input comes to you through staff and their staff reports. So one of the things that we looked at this year was the Highway Safety Improvement Project for University Avenue that IDOT is doing, and that's been a particular concern to us because of the high pedestrian fatalities that have been occurring. We've done a really good job in the rest of the city, particularly in the university district. When I moved here in 2001, the campus had a high pedestrian fatality rate, and that has changed through a lot of effort on all of our various partners. And the place that we've been having most of those fatalities has been along university, and that is an IDOT road. So the staff requested a safety study. They came and did one meeting, and we took a look at the, they came and presented to us their initial existing conditions report. One of the things that we saw that was missing was they did not take, they did not say that they were going to consider lowering speeds along the roadway. We felt like the speeds were one of the factors and a major factor in fatalities. And we also wanted them to make sure to ask for public input earlier rather than later, because sometimes when input is asked for, the public feels like the decisions have already been made. And so we wanted to make sure that input was provided, an opportunity to be taken early in the process. So staff relayed that, and just this last week, they had a public input workshop on some of their recommendations for the roadway. We also took a look at the Bradley Avenue bike lane design, and that's going to be coming soon. We will be doing redesign on Bradley that takes it down to one lane each direction. There is one lane each direction now, but one of the lanes is so wide that people make it into two lanes, and so that will be changed. Bike lanes will actually make it clear where drivers are supposed to be operating. The other thing that we looked at is the university, we have a university representative, and they are taking a look at the Armory Avenue bike path projects and what they're going to be doing there. We also looked at the North Cunningham Sidewalk Project, which you will have noticed. It's really quite a fantastic improvement for all the people who walk out there. And we also talked about law enforcement with, our law enforcement representative came and talked to us about how they do enforcement. We also talked about the issue of bike lane, parking in bike lanes. I think this primarily happens on campus, although, for example, on Main Street, when we did the road diet, we put the center turn lane in with the understanding that would be used for loading and unloading. But the bike lane is almost always what is used for loading and unloading. And so, there were discussion about whether or not we need to have an ordinance not allowing it. Staff has been examining that because in most places where you have bike lanes, parking is already not allowed. So, that's an issue that we continue to take a look at. The big thing this last year was we approved the Bicycle Master Plan. There's a list here of some of the additional recommendations that were made prior to its approval. And it was approved, and we are going to be working on implementing that. We'll just talk about that a little bit later. The next thing up on the agenda, one of the things, is pedestrian plan. This is something that I have long wanted us to do. In the past, when I asked about it, I want us to become a walk-friendly community, the same way we are bicycle-friendly community. There is a program to do that for being walkable. But staff felt like we did not have the data needed to know where our sidewalk network was, what kind of condition it was in, et cetera, which is a very expensive thing to do. KUATs had the grant, and you'll see later that we talk about reviewing that. And that gave us all the data that we needed to move forward with that plan. So, the other thing that staff requested funding for is a bicycle wayfinding plan. That was in our bicycle plan, and we're going to be doing that this year. We're pretty excited about that opportunity. And so, we took a look at other places and best practices for wayfinding and creative placemaking opportunities. We feel like that's going to be a real benefit to the community overall. We also looked at things like our Safe Routes to School Program, the Snow Angel Program we set up this year to encourage voluntary snow removal. We didn't have very much snow this year, so it didn't, there wasn't a lot of activity. But we did have some snow angels that signed up. If we get a lot of snow, we'll hand out some awards to people for clearing snow. And then, we also, as I said, looked at the Sidewalk Network Inventory and Assessment that was done by KUATs. We also talked about trying to do some open streets events, maybe calling at people on pavement as a way to highlight, for example, the MCOR project when it's done in Urbana, and took a look at what's going on with MCOR. We talked about bicycle registrations. This is something the campus is particularly interested in. Right now, each city and the university have their own registration program. And they have seven hundred bikes that are recovered. And the cost to re-release those is five to nine hundred dollars apiece. So, we are spending a lot of money dealing with those bikes. This was a number that was provided to us by the university. So, if you ask me how it was calculated, I do not know. But I'm assuming that staff time for processing, they have to be sure that, you know, the owner isn't going to come get the bike and then re-release it to an entity that wants to take it or when they do the bike giveaways. So, we are spending a lot of money on bikes that are unrecovered to get rid of them. And I think the campus does a lot of that. We also talked about how to set up a centralized registration system and how to do it with incentives because I don't really think these programs work with threat. The campus, for example, you're supposed to have your bike registered to be on campus with your bike. How in the world anybody who's biking from one side of the community to the other would know that is a good question. So, some of the things that we will continue to look at that we didn't make any resolution on were the issue of parking in bike lanes and bicycle registration. That's something we will continue to explore. We also talked about how to increase community engagement and have better communication strategies so that people know what we're talking about, that they can come to us to make more use of our bicycle-friendly community. We're the only gold community. They're only twenty-sixth in the entire country. We're the only one in Illinois. We'd beat Chicago, which I enjoy always pointing out to my friends in Chicago. And we'd like to see that be something that is known and advertised and helps attract people to our community. And so, I'm not going to read through the things that we talked about doing here, but there are a variety of things that we wanted to look at as ways to further engage the community. We also looked at how to do implementation and track that with staff because we want to make sure that we continue to move forward and implement the recommendations that we had in the Bicycle Master Plan. That's really important to us, that we try and accomplish those in as timely a manner as possible. And then, we'll continue to work on the pedestrian master plan and the wayfinding plan this next year. These were some other things that we talked about, community engagement events. We partner with other organizations to do most of these. What we'd really like to see is a calendar of events. Every month of the year, there'd be something that is active, walking or biking, that gets people out, engaging in the community. We've got, right now, we've got the Walk with the Mayors, which is a really great event. We have a lot of bicycling activities in the good weather months. We have Bike to Work Month, Bike to Work Day. We have Bike Month and Bike to Work Day, I should say. And we have Walk and Roll to School Day. But we'd like to see more. I know in Indianapolis, they have hundreds of people show up in December to do an Arctic ride or a polar bear ride with the mayor. And so, those are the kinds of things that, I mean, who would have thought Indianapolis would have a giant polar bear ride? I think that's what they call it. So, they're just fun events that people, it's like our Turkey Trot. You know, the Turkey Trot is wildly successful. They had more people than ever last year. And, you know, who would think you would show up early on Thanksgiving morning to go trot around in turkey costumes at the park? But it's, I find it to be a great deal of fun. I really enjoy that, and so do a lot of other people. So, one thing that we, it's kind of an ask that we wanted to bring to you is that in our Bicycle Master Plan, there was a recommendation, and there continues to be a recommendation, that we should find a way to fund a full-time bicycle and pedestrian coordinator. We struggle really a lot to conduct all of these events and to maintain the work that we're doing because we've got staff in different places doing different things, and the staff have a lot of other job responsibilities in addition to the fact that each community has their own activities. The coordinator on campus and in the City of Champaign. And it seems that having a community-wide coordinator would be really beneficial to help keep our programming rolling forward. And particularly with Bike Month, we've really struggled. Champaign County Bikes, the last several years, did the majority of that work, but the number of their board members now have other full-time jobs. And so, it was very difficult for them to keep that going. I think this next year, KUAT staff is going to help with Bike Month. But we would like for the city to explore with the city and KUATs and the university ways in which we could pool our resources and hire someone who could, even if it started with a part-time position, that that would be really beneficial. And also, if we want to go to the next level as a bicycle-friendly community, that is something that we will need to be doing. So, there's my contact information, the members of our board and staff. And I was going to let Jeff add anything that he would like to say.
I think you covered it.
He has children here in the Urbana School District and is one of my reliable parents whenever I put out a call for children to come and talk. So, he's a participant in many of our events. And with that, we will happily answer any questions that we are able to answer, if you have any.
Eric?
In your discussions about speed limits, did you, did you get an answer as to why on University Avenue, as soon as you go across Wright Street, it's thirty miles per hour on Champaign's side and thirty-five miles per hour on the Urbana side? Is there a reasonable reason for that?
Did you get an answer, Craig?
I'll make an attempt. Basically, east of Wright is a Illinois Department of Transportation jurisdiction. West of Wright is the City of Champaign.
In other words, we don't set the speed limit?
Right.
Okay. And one other question about that region. There is one place where people do cross on foot that's really lethal, potentially. I don't think anybody's been hit there, but they sure could have been. And that is between campus, well, where you go south from Perkins to the north campus at NCSA and Beckman Institute, and from Hampton in Perkins, south. That is horribly dangerous. And I think we're very lucky that nobody has been hit there. Is there any possibility of getting a marked pedestrian crossing there? Is that, is that within our jurisdiction?
It is not within our jurisdiction. That road is, again, controlled by the Illinois Department of Transportation. I can tell you that city staff has also expressed those concerns to the department. As I, as Cynthia mentioned, the department, they did a roadside, a road safety audit. They also looking at proposed improvements there. I think at this time, what we're understanding is their focus is primarily improving the signalized intersections. And there's certain guidelines to installing, say, a mid-block crossing like that. It's our understanding that it would not meet the criteria to do, to install that, but I think they've been looking at that. We, in turn, have had concerns about down to the east of Goodwin Avenue, you know, with the apartment complexes that have been built there, too. You know, the issue really comes down to they have control. We don't have control over that roadway, at least the City of Urbana. We can, we can ask, and we've certainly done that. One thing that they are doing, I guess now I'll highlight this, is last week, at four locations, primarily around the Carl campus. So, this would be Kohler, Orchard, McCullough, and then further down to the east, the Ray Street intersections. They have, the department has installed a leading pedestrian interval, which means that when a pedestrian wants to cross north or south and they push the push button, they would get an advanced call in front of, say, vehicles. So, they would get like a four-second head start when they go north or south. So, they're piloting that. We don't have that anywhere in the city at this time. So, that's a, I went out and used it. It seems to be pretty effective at this time. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Okay, well, keep, please keep pushing, and hopefully, there'll be something done before somebody gets killed there.
Pedestrian lead signals are very helpful in reducing pedestrian collisions. My daughter was hit in the crosswalk at Illinois with the pedestrian signal. People who are turning right don't look. They're looking to the left. And if you've had, if you're already further out in the intersection, they're more likely to see you. Regarding the issue of speed, lowering the speed limit helps, but redesigning the roadway so that it feels less comfortable to go fast is a primary factor in how fast motorists drive. And so, as they work on that roadway, if they make changes to the design that slow people down, that will help. Hopefully, they will. And I know number, everything that they recommended doing needs to be done. I felt like there was more that should be done. And I was unfortunately not here last week to give my input. I never miss an opportunity to do that, if I can avoid it. But I, I hope that we can give a lot of input to them that request that they do the maximum that they can to improve pedestrian safety. The number of pedestrians is increasing crossing university, and so, it can no longer be designed for high-speed through traffic. It has got to share the road with the other roadway users.
Bill, did you have a question?
Just to follow up on that, I know they were handing out brochures at the, at the meeting last week with public input form on the back, so it's probably not too late to offer your public input. I'm not sure exactly.
Online?
Can we do it? Can they do it online? Do you know?
You know, they, they can do it online. I think they could even send them to, say, Kenzo Garnett, who is the district engineer. Or they could even contact myself, you know, with the city staff, and we can forward those comments on. I agree with you. I don't think it's too late at this time that we can go ahead and at least voice our concerns.
Okay. And then, yeah, I had a couple of questions. First, I liked the idea of having a regional kind of bicycle coordinator through KUATs or something. As far as that contributing to increased rating of bicycle-friendly community, is that a, I can't imagine that would be like a steadfast requirement that you have one because then it would kind of discriminate against smaller towns and smaller cities. Is there some population cutoff that they use?
No, there are cities smaller than us who have staff devoted to doing this. So, I don't think there's a cutoff point. It depends on how you have it set up. And if you had someone that was even part-time, that's their job. I think that you, you count that. We're, we have, you know, this is part of Craig and part of Kevin and part of several different peoples. It's included with their job responsibility, but not a major component among the various responsibilities that they have. So, I, there's, we can move up if we're very, very strong in other areas, but that is something that gets mentioned for going up to the next level pretty regularly because I work with other communities on this.
And what is Lily's position at UVA? Is that similar to her?
Well, she's called the, well, she's got a very odd title, title. The Visiting Transportation Demand Management Manager is, I believe, what her title is.
Okay, so it's more than just bicycle pedestrians, so?
Theoretically, yes. I don't think she gets to have much impact on parking policy. Technically, a transportation demand manager would also be involved in parking policy.
And I think just a comment, you mentioned parking in bike lanes. I think in general, loading zones can be kind of considered with that. I noticed some problems with loading zones at Gregory Place. It's mostly just kind of inconvenient because of where UPS parks. It blocks everything and makes it a little bit uncomfortable going out there. I don't think it's a real danger, but just kind of, I don't know if there's any other solution because I don't want to go behind each building because then I'd have to make two stops instead of making one in the middle. So, some forethought to that, I guess, going forward. I still don't understand the five hundred, nine hundred dollars. And I guess you won't be able to provide an answer, but I guess when Urbana confiscates bicycles and, or not confiscates, when we find bicycles and they go into the lost and found or whatever, and then we distribute them, that's not what this is about, right?
That was a number Lily gave us in her presentation. I don't think she explained how that number was calculated for us, but we could ask.
So, that's basically a UVA, their estimated cost of running that program?
I'm assuming it's staff time to process. You have to go, in their case, they're cutting the bikes off a lot of the time and then storing them and then processing them to be either disposed of or given away or however they...
So, it sounds like there's a lot of miscellaneous stuff. I know last week, I got an orange tag on my bike because they were just going around tagging everybody's bikes and seeing how many orange tags were left a few days later, so that's probably in that figure, too.
It could be. I understand in the past that they had a person whose job full-time was to do bike enforcement on campus back in the seventies, and they no longer have that. So, I mean, we could ask her for information on that and send it forward.
My only concern would be what is Urbana actually spending on our program? If we're anywhere near five hundred dollars each, I'd recommend that we, I don't, it's not in the budget. So, I don't see how it could be that much unless we were paying police overtime or something. But if it's close to that, we should just buy new bikes and give those away.
Any other questions? Jared?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. So, I had a quick question about residential streets. I'm wondering, are you using the city's definition of the streets? And we have arterial streets, and we have, I mean, I'm just curious what you mean by residential streets.
Well, there's, streets have to be classified in what we call Functional Classification Plan. That's actually a federal requirement. And so, there is a system for classifying streets, and residential streets are streets of primary purpose, which is to provide access to residential properties. They are lower speed, lower volume streets.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Jared?
Cynthia, I just had one question on the pedestrian side of things. So, I know that there's been some discussion about what Carl's going to be doing in the future and if they are going to be expanding their campuses and their operations in addition to the four thousand people that they already employ. One of the things that's been brought up is talking about having some kind of friendly way to get them to downtown Urbana. And I don't know if that scope has been included in the master plan, the way it's been studied so far, but I think that that would be an important thing to look at.
Okay. We have not gotten that far. We're still on the existing conditions part of it. But I think that everybody would probably agree with you. And I think Race and Broadway are the two streets... are the two streets that we look at, that we would like to see pulling people in. And also, to have that corridor from downtown to Crystal Lake function in a way that pulls people back and forth, because Crystal Lake's really a hidden gem, in addition to our downtown.
Anyway, just, just thoughts for planning in the future.
Yeah. And so please come when we have a public input and, and give us that input.
Do you guys have a date for that?
Oh.
No, not yet.
Yeah, okay. Forthcoming.
Yes.
Just to follow up on your comment, Jared, that very topic has come up a number of times in several different meetings I've been in the last month. Everyone recognizes the need for connectivity between downtown, the Carl campus, and then on to Crystal Lake Park. So, so people are thinking about that, and it's, I think it's going to get some traction.
All right.
It's very important.
Eric? So, the really natural way to get from Carl downtown is to walk along the railroad tracks. And, and it's a lovely walk. I love it. So, but there's no way to, it's sort of extra-legal, I guess. I mean, I don't suppose I'd ever get a ticket for doing it, but on the other hand, there's no way to actually make it an official, or there hasn't been up to now, an official pathway. But is, will that change ever?
Well, that depends on how much effort people want to put in. In Madison, you may have, if you've been there, they have a multi-use pathway in the railroad right-of-way that is very close to campus. There are places that have succeeded, and I've been on placed, on lines like that in California as well, where they have a multi-use path in the railroad right-of-way. So it's a question of working with the railroads, which based on our history with the Kickapoo Trail, would be probably a long-term project. But if you don't ask, you never get there. So that's something that I, I think that that, it is an active rail line, so we would have to pursue it with that understanding.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate the time.
All right, next is staff report.
Good evening. Libby Horowitz, Economic Development Specialist. For those who don't know me, I'm going to talk a little bit about the May Business and Development Report. We did make some changes this month, just to start off with that. We're no longer putting all of the projects that are ongoing, and all of the businesses that are ongoing. All that you're going to see here are the businesses or projects that have updates. So the things that you're not seeing, that doesn't mean they're not happening. It just means that they didn't have any updates this month. So to talk a little bit about what happened in May, Red Bicycle Ice Cream is about to open. They are located in the Pines, and they are going to use a lot of local ingredients, such as dairy from Kilgus Farmstead in Fairbury, and also coffee from Columbia Street Roastery in Champaign. There's also a new downtown coworking space called Collider Cowork. They're located in Main Street Plaza on the second story. They're going to be offering hot desks. So those are temporary spaces that are shared by multiple people, as long as more long-term permanent desks. They also got one of their first tenants, who's a long-term, a permanent desk that they're renting, and that's Malachi Entertainment. And they're focusing on entertaining content, such as short films and web series. They have one going right now that they're trying to gain funding for, called Empowered, which is about young female superhero powers, and, sorry, superheroes, and gaining their powers. And they're actually filming locally as well. They are going to have a benefit concert on June 18th at the Urbana-Champaign Independent Media Center. Also, at the Champaign-Urbana Independent Media Center, there's a new business, DLNZ Productions, by Derek Lindsay. He is from Champaign, and he is a longtime music producer, and he's worked with people such as Prince, and Coolio, and Chuck D, and Ricky Smiley. So he has located in IMC, and is going to be offering music production, mixing workshops, and also lessons. To talk a little bit about some of the projects that have happened, so on that second page, there is in Five Points, a new T-Mobile, and that was the wrong price, that's the wrong construction cost. The correct construction cost is actually $39,000. Also, Tricochi University of Beauty Culture has expanded. So they currently only have one tenant space remaining open. Blackbird also completed their renovations in, on Main Street. So they have their certificate of occupancy, and they're still working on an opening date. And O'Reilly Auto Parts in South Urbana is also progressing along Philo. Additionally, in South Urbana, Clark Lindsay Village completed their wellness center, which has such features as a fitness center, physical therapy gym, and indoor pool. The next page just shows some of the locations that some of those are happening, and the rest is some information that you can peruse as you would like. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
Oh, I apologize. There was two other things that I wanted to highlight. So, the Business and Development update, so the Business and Development Luncheon, the, we had our last one in spring, and that was the UVA Presented. The next one's coming up in August, and that's actually going to be joint with Champaign. It's going to be sponsored by First Federal. It'll be at Silver Creek, and it will be on transportation. So we will have representatives from CU MTD, Willard Airport, as well as the EMCOR Project. And also, speaking of transportation, Mayor Marlin mentioned that United Airlines had their inaugural flight on June 8th. Also, we mentioned the other big thing that happened was the Uncork that happened this past weekend. So I apologize. Now, any questions?
Jared?
Hi, Libby.
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
You, too.
I'm curious about the empty county market space in the Philo Business District.
I don't have any updates on that one at this time.
There's somebody behind you stepping up, who I think might. I know who Brandon is. Thanks, though, Mike.
So Neiman Foods has put that property on the market, and we're understanding that they've been in conversations with a tenant. So hopefully, we'll have an announcement before too long. You're referring to the one on Philo Road, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So they're, they're not keeping it to expand Value Check, or one of their, one of their many strands of grocery store?
That's my understanding. When they put it on the market, that, a few months back, that seemed to be the indication at that time. We had been optimistic that they would want to put another grocery store in there, but my understanding is they're focusing on having it tenanted at this time.
So keeping ownership, but renting?
I guess I don't know for a fact if it's going to be sold or for sale, but...
Okay.
Not operating it themselves.
All right, thanks, Brandon.
So, you have a question?
I have a point of information.
Oh.
Go ahead and ask your question.
So, I'm curious as to how you guys work with the EDC?
Well, we attend the meetings. We interact with the staff there as well. One of the ways that we frequently partner is that EDC, as the mayor was explaining, plays a regional role. So when a large employer comes to look at our market, we, they often contact the EDC. Or if they contact us first, while we really want them to select Urbana, our inclination is always to share that information with the Economic Development Corporation, because we want that lead to be shared as broadly as possible, because it's much more important that that employer see all the possible sites in our entire market, and select Champaign-Urbana as a market, rather than pitting Champaign versus Urbana, versus one of the other communities in our metro. So that's a really important role they play in bringing those leads together. I'm kind of blanking right now, I'm sorry. But there's much more we do. The Small Business Development Center is a very big area, too, in which we work with them.
The reason why I was asking the question is because if we have our own economic development department, I didn't know. I'm trying to see how this, why are we sort of partnering, or paying someone else to do economic development, if we're doing it?
They're really at different scales. I think that's, that's the most important thing. The Economic Development Corporation has long fostered strong relationships with our largest employers, community-wide, and that, that's a very important process that they go through. The mayor might want to add something, too?
Yes, and we also draw on the expertise of the staff at the EDC. Craig Rost and Carly McCory have been extremely helpful, actually, in the last couple of weeks in advising on specific projects. The other entity that operates through the EDC is an international business center. So anybody in Champaign County who has a product or a business that they want to market globally can go to EDC and get top-notch advice on, from start to finish, on how you go about being a global entrepreneur. And that's funded through the University of Illinois, but they're based at the EDC. So the contributions that Urbana makes to that comes back to Urbana, actually, many times. And, and as I said, we, the, again, the Small Business Development Center also has been very useful. So, so EDC serves as, as supplements our own economic development program. Their expertise is there for us to use. The, Brandon will be actually a board member of the EDC. So we have a very good partnership with EDC, and through EDC, we work very closely with all the other government agencies, University, Parkland College in the county.
So, and a local example.
What she said.
Yeah, what she said. And, you know, an example of a company that works with Kathy Cravens, the International Trade Specialist, is Nebraska International, which they send their flight simulators all over the world. So, you know, there are companies that, that take advantage of those great resources locally, but we could never have an international trade specialist in-house. We're very lucky to have one who serves a large region, based in our community.
And what most people don't know is there's actually an inland port in Decatur, Illinois. So you can ship, you know, from rail, from Decatur to the rest of the world, which is an, it's a very valuable resource that people utilize here. So, so again, Kathy, Kathy is key to that.
I believe they're having a tour of that, too, coming up soon.
I've done it. It's fascinating.
If anyone's interested, please contact us. We'll put you in touch.
So I definitely appreciate, you know, a lot of the information about the EDC. I'm just trying to understand, from our perspective, as, as a department, you guys are doing a presentation, I'm trying to see exactly what the, as the Economic Development Department, EDC has come up several times. I'm trying to see what the differences are, what you do. And I'm sure there are a lot of people at home who are watching, trying to understand that as well.
Sure.
So, so thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Jared?
So, that made me think of two things, and they're both related. One, did the EDC have anything to do with the investment group that is interested in purchasing the Lincoln Hotel? And two, what in the world is going on with that? Didn't see that in the report.
Yeah, we don't have any updates on the, on the hotel for you this evening. You know, the EDC wasn't involved in attracting that particular developer, but the, I think it was a drywall manufacturer that went into a Paul Tatman, I think brought about 20 new jobs to Tatman Circle across from Walmart. That was a lead that came to us through the EDC. And, and so, you know, we do receive a benefit from it sometimes. But, but those processes are ongoing, you know. We do our best, but just sometimes Urbana doesn't have the right site or the right building to attract the interest of that larger employer. You know, another angle is that you look at who, who the staff of these different organizations serve. The economic development staff for the city serve the city at Citizenry. So we're always looking out for Urbana's interests in the work we do. The EDC works on a regional basis. The UVA is serving its business members first and foremost. And so there's a benefit to having staff who are working for the city specifically in those arenas.
All right, thank you all very much.
I have just lots of information, and I, but this is related to the Economic Development Report. I asked Brandon, we've been handing out the Small Business Development Grants now for three years. So just out of, for my curiosity, and I think it's good for the council to know this as well, I've asked Brandon to take a look at who's received these grants, how they're doing, what their status is, you know, one, two, three years after receiving the grant. So we'll get a report on that eventually. We'll have three years' worth of data.
That would be good to have. All right. Now we're on to discussion of social services. Okay, so you all would have, I guess I'm the person? I think, if you raise your hand, I'll call on you. No, just go ahead, Eric. So you all will have gotten a spreadsheet from me, where I went through the mathematical process that, that I outlined. I took all of your, all of your input, and I, I zeroed out all of the items that didn't receive majority support, which would be five out of the nine individuals, the city council members, the mayor, and the township supervisor. I averaged them all, and then I, so it's kind of funny. You'll see on the spreadsheet, there's, one of the columns just has one number, 8.72. That was the number by which I divided the totals to get the whole column to add up to 200, to get the averages to add up to $250,000. It wasn't nine, it was 8.72 because of the fact that some people voted for things that were zeroed out. So they, they were, they were gone. And then I rounded. And then there was one correction that I had to make at the very last. Bill pointed out to me that there was one provider for whom the mathematical process wound up giving that provider more than they had asked for. And that was because one council member had made an award, suggested an award that was larger than requested, and I didn't catch that. So I reduced that one to the level that was asked for. So, so to the extent, to the best of my ability, the awards in, in column Z, I guess it is, reflect the consensus of all of us, plus the township supervisor. All right, so I guess we're going to have a discussion and presentation of some sort by these wonderful individuals at the table here?
We're really just here to answer questions. If council members have any questions about the process, or any of the applications, anything like that, we're just, yeah, able to help in any way we can.
Oh, I, I will add one thing. I, I made no, I didn't do any sorting about which pool of money the grants would come from, for each one. I didn't, that was, I took that as outside my purview, as something that would be worked out in staff. Well, I do want to say, Eric, thank you for pooling all this stuff together and using your mathematical skills to, to bring us to a, to a rounded number, and to look at the averages and various different things. I'm sure, speaking on behalf of the council, I think, I appreciate the fact that you're doing that, and I don't have to do it. Danielle, did you have something?
Yeah, and just, just a couple of things. So first, just two process points, and maybe four quick notes as we look at this. So the first is, so I'm here today speaking at the Committee of the Whole, since some of the funds come through the township, and some through the city. Last year, the township gave $175,000, and the city $75,000. And I want to acknowledge that the city staff have typically done the heavy lifting. So in addition to the money that the city offers, the staff, you know, will pretty much runs the application process. We thank you for that. In the future, I think, and I called Charlie about this today, but I had a couple of comments, and I said, Charlie, what's the, what's the right place? Since this is really a budget process for the council, it's not a township meeting. I think in the future, we might just want to do like a joint meeting, where you're kind of wearing both hats, and, and I'm present. If I had some foresight, I could have asked for that. I didn't. So it wasn't really until I saw the allocations that I noticed I had some comments. So I think next year, let's just kind of, we can sync up our budget process. So, a couple of points, just as you look at this piece. So first, I wanted to note that the, on the spreadsheet that Eric put together, and Eric, thank you, I know this is a lot of work. I used to do it, Esther did it before me. I would always like, wish I had not volunteered the night I was trying to put things together. So I feel your pain. But I did, so no, no accusations here. I just want to note that if you look at rape crisis services, prevention education, it looks like it's tucked under a praise center, and it's not. It's actually racist. So if you just want to make a note, as you're allocating, you might think those are two to the same organization. The second thing is that courage... The second thing is that Courage Connection, and they said this in their presentation, but I wanted to underline it. So, the, for the last two years, we have provided over $30,000 in support to Courage Connection. This year, the council averages show a pretty large cut to that. So, it's, it's about, it's 23,940. And so, just to, I want to do a temperature check with the council, because I didn't expect, especially with Courage Connection going through what it's going through, that folks would be recommending a cut. So, my thought is that folks may have looked at just one of the programs last year allocation and basically just chose to duplicate that and didn't look at the fact that there's two allocations and that they combined two programs into one program. So, essentially, that one name, that one program embodies both programs that we had last year. And so, when I looked at the allocations for Courage Connection, it looks like a couple of, you know, most folks kind of kept it at a higher rate. But, I noticed that there's a number of folks who basically just gave as though they were asking for that one program. So, I just want to flag that, and I'd like to know if that allocation was intentional or if it was oversight simply because they kind of urged those two. So, two, just, just a couple other comments, and then I want to kind of put my, my hat in the ring. The second is.
Excuse me for a second, Danielle, because I don't, from a procedural standpoint, I want to understand, because you posed a question. I don't know if that's a question, can we just have the open discussion about, that's not a problem for us to do that, right? Okay, just wanted to make sure so we can get, get to those. So, I don't know if we want to answer that question now and then go to the next?
Yeah, it's, it's your, your choice as facilitator. I have a couple of points. If you want to just take them one at a time, that's fine.
Okay. Go ahead, Diane.
Just to provide context, there were four organizations or programs that weren't funded at all. Can we get a listing of what those were? Reminder?
Sure. I'll, I, there was a previous manifestation of the spreadsheet that includes those before I took the, deleted the rows, so I'll send that around. And, and I can look it up also.
Could we get that tonight?
Sure.
So, I, I would want to sort of make sure that we're clear about each point that you're making. So, this is a pretty, I think it's a pretty direct question. We can get some answers from folks who, who want to participate in, answer that, that question. If you are one of the members who was maybe confused about what was going on with Courage Connection, or for each individual, we can start with Mary Alice, or we can start wherever you want to, to answer that question. Is everyone clear on Danielle's question? Okay.
I just want to clarify, which two, did you say merged? What were the names?
Yeah, so it's because it was on two different spreadsheets. So, the staff provided the spreadsheet that shows the 16 to 17 award at Mountain. That was last year's Mountain.
Right.
Courage Connection had two programs. Homeless Services Program was funded by the township at 17,500. Domestic Violence Services Program was funded at 13,300. And when the ESOC, the Executive Director, met with us, she explained that she was combining those two under Domestic Violence Services Program and was asking 34,000. But, she was clear she was not reducing services. She was simply combining for procedural reasons. And so, my question is, if we funded them at 30,800 last year, how is it that we got down to 23,940? And I noticed that there were a number of council members who seemed to just look at one of the programs and not both when making their allocation. Maybe it was your intention. That's fine, and that's your prerogative. I just wanted to flag it in case it was a mistake.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you pointing that out because I didn't realize that those two had been merged. So, certainly, my process for going through this was to balance what they were requesting, how we had funded them in the past, and what new programs were there, and how we could, you know, for the programs that I thought were, were a good support for the city. So, I certainly did not try and, I was one of the people who, who did decrease it. But, my intention was not to decrease people substantially. So, I think that's exactly what happened in that case.
So, let me just, from a procedural standpoint, we do not, or do we have to approve this tonight? Or to, we, I guess it's, we're in the Committee of the Whole. We can just, we could make an amendment going forward if we wanted to. Okay, Elizabeth is saying, no, wait a minute before you say that.
So, as, as far, I think there was some concern about this having to be done before we approve the budget. This does not need to be done before we approve the budget. We have set the amount of funding in the budget at the same level as last year. This is really a question about how that gets allocated, and we can adopt the budget without this decision.
All right, thank you. Eric? So, I'll just say that if people do have second thoughts based on this discussion and want to modify their lists, I, I am willing to reiterate the procedure and, and, and make it, you know, and make the end result reflect your most considered judgment. Libby?
So, regardless of the budget, we do want to get started with the agreements and getting the programs started. So, our schedule does show this occurring next week. Our current schedule shows it June 19th for the allocation. So, if you're this close, it would be good to adhere to that because I know that we're then going to come forward with some sub-reception agreements July 10th.
But, we have to actually vote, we have to still go to full council next week. So, there could be an amendment done before then, and you would still be able to start those allocations though, correct?
Do you think that?
I, yeah, I think that shouldn't be a problem.
So, process question. So, your vote in this, now that I'm township supervisor, I understand how fuzzy this was when I was on council. So, because the township budget is delayed such that we're voting on the budget in September, the vast majority of funds come from the township budget, and I know that social service agencies depend on it starting with the fiscal year. I know that that's a big deal for under-resourced organizations. So, I think one of the things we, this is, I guess, a process question, but I wonder if, it, it seems like the town board in the past has had to confirm the township side and the city council confirmed the city council side. And so, the town board might need to convene and actually approve before the full township budget is complete. So, I just want to flag that. It's my intention to try to keep to the staff schedule, city staff schedule, and to kind of keep things on, on board with the social service funding starting with the new year.
So, I will, I'll just, if, if, in, in the recognition that I may be a, a link in the chain of getting this thing finalized, just to let folks know, I will be leaving town Wednesday afternoon to go stay in a hotel in O'Hare and fly to Costa Rica Thursday morning for a meeting. So, I'll be in meetings all the time I'm there. I'll get on a plane at 4:30 in San Jose in the, Monday morning, the 19th, to fly back here. And if everything goes well, I'll get back in town maybe about 5 o'clock. I will do my very, very best to go online and, and do this even if I'm, you know, away. So, if, if my spirit is willing, my flesh may be weak, but I'll do my best.
Charlie, then Bill.
I was just going to simply point out that your option, of course, is always just to send this to council with no recommendation pending a re, a reiteration here of the numbers. All right, thank you. Bill?
One, one possibility would be, since this is kind of a two-step process anyway, we've apparently eliminated some agencies that we didn't have a majority of council members to support. And I had allocated quite a bit of money to one of those. So, now some of my allocation has kind of disappeared. So, I would appreciate the opportunity to look at it again in light of those agencies that didn't receive support and allocate my full $250,000 across the board.
Sure. So, yeah, so what, basically, the process that I went through sort of expanded your dollars to all of the others. So, you still voted for 250,000, but you voted for more on the others. And, and that was, well, I mean, we're, we're being very open and transparent. So, that was the, the one that Bill wrote to me about was Urbana School District Splash Program, which received only four votes out of the nine. And that was a peculiar one because those four votes were, were pretty generous. But, so mostly, the ones that went away were ones that if there were votes for them, they were really quite small amounts.
Well, I was one who allocated to the Splash Program, which is a very, very important after-school program for, that serves 100% Urbana youth. And so, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to reallocate some of my funds. The problem with these, this process is we had $500,000 worth of requests and $250,000 to allocate. And we had several brand-new organizations asking for funds. And, and it's just an imperfect system. So, I really, for next year, like to look at this entire process again. But, I am really disappointed that the Splash Program is not going to be funded this year.
If a fifth person, if somebody who didn't vote for Splash sends me something for Splash, it'll go in.
So, just trying to keep on track with what we have going around. I think you're getting some of the, the feedback that you were looking for. I think, from what I can see, what Eric allocated and what I allocated. Bill, do you, do you want to make a comment on, on Danielle's question?
I think I allocated 20,000, but I was kind of going by what had been allocated for that particular program in the past, which is 17,000 or something, was it?
17,000.
So, I would probably adjust that upwards now.
And Dennis is not here. I think Dean was not in that category. And Jared, to Danielle's question.
Yeah, I don't think, Danielle, I don't think I also understood that that was being combined into one, and I would like the opportunity to adjust accordingly.
All right, so that's, yes?
Yes, and to Danielle's question, just, I mean, it's in the record, but I'll just say for the public record, I, I allocated 34,000, and I was especially mindful of that because Naomi is working with a group of other people who are frantically trying to raise private funds to keep Courage Connection going. So, that was a high priority for her, and therefore, I made it a high priority in my vote.
So, and it's interesting because with the 34 from Eric, I think I allocated 32. But, when you do the average, it's, you know, it's easy to bring it down. So, you've got the answer to your first question. What was your second one?
Appreciate it. And I'm sorry, I have to do additional work. I just want to make sure when we, we're voting, we know what we're voting on, so.
Well, we got to do this right.
Yeah.
People need this.
Yeah, exactly. There's a lot, I, I mean, these organizations do a lot with a little, all of them. The second piece, and this is apropos to what the mayor just shared, and I do, I support a revision of the process. Let's just look at, you know, how we generally do grants. I think averages typically are a good place to start the conversation, but they don't have to end there. But, it, the issue is we have 23 organizations in the spreadsheet that Eric showed. Three are new, 12 received lower amounts, and six renewals received higher amounts. So, what we essentially do is each time we add an organization, we're reducing the, you know, the funding, the potting. Now, I supported, I think, almost all the new organizations. I supported it in some way. So, I'm not speaking to the fact that there shouldn't be upstart organizations. I do think that the council and town board should consider whether we should allow taxing bodies to apply in the future. And partly, it's, it's just a matter of, you know, we have to at some point kind of set some limits. And I feel like taxing bodies have their own taxing authority. Township has taxing authority. The city has taxing authority. And so, I have some concerns when just, I, I love the school district. I love the park district. I agree, the Splash Program is fantastic. It's not so much about how endearing or impactful the programs are. It's more about like, just trying to figure out how to contain the potting. And in particular, these nonprofits that don't, that are struggling with state funding, they don't have other sources, right? And so, you know, we've been able to, so I just think we should consider that piece, both in the funding allocations this year, but especially moving forward, should we consider that as a criteria change?
Okay. Any further discussion on that particular topic?
On all social services, or?
No, just on the, the question or the issue that's being raised about maybe taxing bodies being something that is one of the entities, entities that we allow to address their concerns through their taxing and levability. So, Jared?
Diane, maybe you can answer this anyway. But, do we ever ask for money for, from other taxing bodies? Is that, or do they only ask for it from us, or do we get stuff from them too? Do we ask them?
They don't do grants like this. But, I would point out that some of these programs that are applying for funds from the city are grant-funded. They're not supported with tax dollars, including the Splash, Splash Program. If you recall, a few years ago, they, they actually were, lost their funding, and we helped provide a bridge, you know, to get them to their next grant level. But, these are grant-funded programs. They're not tax dollar-supported, at least a lot of them. So, just a point of interest.
I think that's, that's important to note as well. Did you have another question?
Unless they're supported by our tax dollars?
Pardon?
Well, that's what, I mean, this money that's generated, or is this all come from the township fund? This $250,000?
75,000 of this is, is general fund, and then the rest is township.
Okay. But, generated by tax revenue?
So, it's tax, yeah, township is tax levy.
Yeah, but I think the mayor's support, you may be talking past each other. The mayor's point is that the Splash Program is, I believe, supported by a federal grant. So, it, so it isn't.
Which has been cut.
Which, which has been cut. So, we're, so if, if we decide to help with that, we are augmenting a federal grant. We are not, we're, as opposed to, you know, as opposed to just doing something that otherwise was being done by, by school, school district taxing.
Okay. So, I'm sure that's something that we can discuss later as we, we move forward. Did you have anything else, Danielle? No? You know, one of the things that I have been looking at, I don't, I don't have a question. I have some comments. So, Eric, would you take the chair?
I'll take the chair, and I'll recognize Mr. Ammons.
So, thank you very much. This is certainly a difficult process for us as we try to, to support these different organizations who are doing, I mean, everybody's doing great work with whatever, whatever means they have. One of the things that's increasingly concerning for me, as we try to use whatever resources we have as the council, as a community, to make sure that those resources are actually being distributed and being shared with the entire community, or certainly with those, in the case of a lot of the social services, the most vulnerable or those, the less fortunate within our community. And so, one of the things that's, I, I, I look at is whether I'm working in my capacity as a trustee on the service board or in various different capacities, trying to see when agencies or investment managers come before us on the, the board that I sit on or even before this council, to see if they tell me they're concerned and they're very, very passionate about diversity issues or bringing women on board or whatever, the, under the umbrella of diversity, we ask them all the time. I ask them all the time. So, tell me what your actual agency looks like. Tell me the people who are decision-makers in your agency, what do they look like? Do they represent the demographics of the community that you live in? And so, when, whether that group or an agency here comes here to say, well, we serve 100% of people in Urbana, but all 13 people on our staff, they're all white guys. Or, there's no other diversity within this particular group, maybe females, maybe white females. But, there are no Latinos, no African-Americans, no people with disabilities. Well, that doesn't send the message to me that you're actually trying to represent the entire community. send a message to me that you're actually trying to represent the entire community. And I'm concerned about that. I just want to say it publicly, whether it's, whatever particular entity that comes before us, whether it's a contractor or one of these social service agencies, I'm always alarmed. It's a red flag for me that you're claiming to represent and to do work, and probably are doing work, in underserved communities, but yet the individuals who are receiving the, the funding that you come and ask for, for staffing positions, they don't reflect those individuals that you're actually serving. So that's a concern for me also, when I think about the social service funding or in other capacities as we move forward. So, you know, just wanting to share that publicly, those agencies that are watching. For me, it's important for me to see exactly who those individuals are, and what sort of representation of our demographic you have when you come to present to the council from my perspective. So just wanted to make that comment.
Here.
Yes?
So on that topic, because I share the concern, and I raised some of these questions, when some social service agencies were before us, I wasn't able to ask across the board because we only heard from a subset of folks. But the way we handled, we had a concern a number of years ago about the pay for the highest, for the leadership team of some of the social service agencies, because we saw some six figures in there. And so we asked to be, that it be added to the application process. What is the salary makeup of your leadership team? And I think that the council and trustees, and I certainly as supervisor would, I think it would be easy enough to add that as a question so that we gather it from all the groups. It basically says, what's the ethnic and racial demographic background of who you serve, and also of your staff? And I do think that if you have an organization that is funding, you know, that's supporting a majority of people of color, to have an all-white staff, I find that unacceptable. And I really would ask a question, what's going on here? Do you, you know, and how can you work to develop the cultural competence that you need within your organization to serve your constituencies? So I think that's procedurally one of the ways that we could handle that. I think I would suggest it for next year going forward. But also council members and trustees can look at that for this year when you're adjusting your allocations.
Well, actually, you just made me think about something, just sort of a final comment for me. When I'm asking for and advocating for this type of diversity and equity in our demographics or the, or the distribution of our resources, I'm going to ask that of these agencies, but I'm also appealing to my fellow council members. And the reality was that one of these particular agencies came before us and made this claim that they were serving 100% of the folks in Urbana, yet, and many of that, much of that demographic were people of color, yet they had an all-white staff, right? And yet still, nice, substantial chunks were by this council given to them, regardless of that. And so I think it's important for us as a council to also think about that when we talk about who's serving what demographic, where that funding is coming from, and what that leadership team or their, their directors and associate directors and things like that, exactly what they look like, and what, if they don't represent the demographic of, of the community. So, that's it for me.
Well, I'll turn the chair back to you then.
Well, thank you, so you did a great job, Mary Alice.
So I just wanted to clarify from Eric. So Bill had said that he had allocated some money that doesn't show up there in his total. I was just looking over your shoulder. His total's $250,000. So Diane and I both allocated money that's not on there, and our total is 230.
Oh, now it's 250.
It wasn't, it wasn't on my spreadsheet this morning.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I, I think that there were some cases where I was carrying over a number, and other cases where I did a sum. I wasn't completely internally consistent in all that I did, and I apologize for that. I'm not really one of these spreadsheet geniuses, I'm really muddled through.
All right, so were there any other comments? I think that, yeah, all right. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I guess nothing else from council? All right, all right. All right. Guess what? We're moving to the actual business items and stuff. If Charlie lets me, go ahead, Charlie.
You might want to send this to council. You've had a discussion.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If you want to, you could send it to council with no recommendation if you want to take action on it next week.
Okay. So we will, is there a motion to send this to council without a recommendation for approval?
I'll move to send it to council without a recommendation for approval, without a recommendation, period.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Eric Jacobson, seconded by Mary Alice Wu. Any further discussion? Bill?
What are we sending to council? Just the spreadsheet that was sent out earlier, and with, we're going to be doing adjustments between now and then?
The intent of my motion is to send the issue to the council, which will be informed by an updated spreadsheet between now and then.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you very much, Charlie. Appreciate that. All right. Next on the agenda is ordinance number 2017-06-029, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 343, increasing the number of Class B and MB2 liquor licenses for 25 O'Clock Brewing Company, 208 West Grigg Street, Suite 101, Urbana, Illinois 61801. Mayor Marlin.
Yes, this is.
I'm sorry, first I need to call on Mr. Jared Miller.
Thanks, Aaron. Though it is with great displeasure that I have to recuse myself from this vote. For a new brewery in downtown Urbana, I must do so nonetheless.
And there's something about state law that makes him recuse himself? Does he have to say that every time?
He doesn't have to go through the litany. I gave him some information, because this is really his first time having to do this. All he has to do is say, basically, state law requires me to recuse myself, period. And then he can push off.
But we appreciate the creativity with which he is imbuing this process.
Mayor Marlin?
Okay, this is liquor licenses for the 25 O'Clock Brewing Company. They're getting a Class B license, which is for the sale of beer, retail consumption on or off premises, and they're also getting a license to, for MB2, which is brewing, as a brewery. So for the new council members, this may be the first one we've done since you've been on the council. The chart on the bottom has these two licenses. B goes from 1 to 2, the MB2 license goes from 1 to 2. So that means we now have two breweries in Urbana. Jolinda also did some cleanup on some other things. So under Class C licenses, she, she went through and actually counted the number of licenses in each category, so we had a number of corrections to make. So we don't have 23 as previously thought, there are 21. G2, we have 9 instead of 10. And R2, there are 10 instead of 9. And we're going to be working on a different way of tracking these things, so it's a little clearer. But basically in Urbana, we vote on each liquor license or each gaming license, which also has a liquor license attached. And for members of the public, and especially for the new council members, if you want to know what each of these different liquor license classifications is, the easiest place to find them is in the schedule of fees that we just passed. Pages 1 through 2 lists all the different kinds of liquor licenses and a very, and a brief description of what they are. So you might want to keep that handy as we go through. What's not included on this chart are the special event permits, which are Class T, those are for temporary. So we will be looking at a, just a bit, just a easier, more easier to understand way of tracking these things.
So any further discussion or information from you, Mayor Marlin, about this company?
No.
All right.
Looking forward to them opening.
Any questions? Well, I'll entertain a motion to move this to council. Anyone?
I'll move, I'll move that we send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Eric Jacobson, seconded by Bill Brown. Any further discussion?
What was that middle part? Just kidding.
Bill?
I just, I know there are several people that I've talked to that are looking forward to this. I was wondering if there was any projected opening date yet? I think the last time I talked to you, it was sometime this year.
You guys are welcome to come up and answer that question. We're about to vote on whether or not you get liquor license. You might want to answer it. No, I'm just messing with you.
We were hoping to avoid that question. We'll be opening the brewery sometime this month, maybe early July, to start production, not for selling yet. So we have to build up some inventory once we actually get our occupancy permit, and then we can.
So the process is for you guys to brew first, and then it has to age?
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to age, but it takes a while for the yeast to do its work.
Okay.
Two to three weeks per batch.
So then you're talking about doing the brewing part, but, but before the end of the month, and then as far as the actual, the sale, you're talking three months, what?
Well, we talked with the city, John Schneider, and he said it would be okay to do basically like the sip yard, where we would serve off our patio until the taprooms finish, which we're, we're planning that to be ready sometime in September.
Great, thank you.
Thanks a lot, fellas.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose, ayes have it.
Thanks.
Number 9, resolution number 2017-06-039R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental lease agreement, computer service storage at the county building IT.
Good evening, I'm just here to answer questions as well.
All right, now that is a succinct presentation. Any questions for Sanford? All right.
I have, I have.
Okay.
It's not actually a question, it's, I worked in IT for many years, and $300 to store a server is incredibly reasonable, so I would, I am fully in support of passing this.
Is that a motion?
Yes, this is a motion to, what do I say? Send to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
So that was moved by Mary Alice Wu from Ward 1, seconded by Jared Miller from Ward 7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Ordinance number 2017-06-025, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Section 38, the liquor sale location, legal. Oh, he has to recuse this one too? Go ahead.
Oh, oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Due to state liquor law, I must recuse myself as well from this particular discussion, though I'm interested to hear what it's about.
All right.
There are a number of businesses that basically have a packaged liquor license. Walmart is one, Meyer is another, and there may be a couple of others. We have other package stores within the city. And they take, the Meyer in particular, and Walmart in particular, take orders for liquor covered by their license, whether it's spirits, beer, or wine. And then the purchaser can drive up and they'll trot the goods out to the car. And that is not provided for in our current liquor ordinance, because the way the ordinance is written, it says "in the premises," not "on the premises," but "in the premises." On the premises might be construed as to allow this. So this amendment essentially would allow this to occur pursuant to certain regulation that are, the regulations are outlined, verifying the customer, verifying age, that kind of thing. And of course, it's packaged goods in original sealed containers.
Questions? Bill?
So I know, like Schnucks does groceries delivery, do they not deliver liquor, or how would that work?
I'm not aware whether they deliver liquor, if you're talking about to your home or your business, I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
That issue is not, they didn't raise that issue. This was just the pickup, drive-up, pickup.
Any other questions? Mary Annis?
So do the drivers have to abide by the state training for bartenders?
I didn't hear you.
Do the drivers who deliver?
There are no drivers who deliver this.
Oh, sorry. Yes, that's what I did.
The individuals who actually deliver this, I believe, will be BACIT-trained. I think they are.
BACIT-trained?
BACIT-trained. It's, it's the training program that's required of anyone who serves liquor. It might be open container service, I'd have to check that, I don't remember.
But this ordinance doesn't, does it specifically state that they have to go through that training? I didn't see it. I saw it with, you know, the IDing of people and so forth, but.
If it doesn't say it in here, my research indicated that they didn't need BACIT-training because they're not serving for consumption on premises. There is no requirement of BACIT-training.
I just wanted to make sure I understand what we're talking about, that we're simply talking about being able to pull up to a place like Meyer, have them bring your groceries out to your car with your liquor, and put it in your car, and you leave.
Correct.
But there's verification, you know, age, you know, making sure the customer matches the person who, you know, who is actually picking it up.
It's just a mobile cash register, basically.
Yeah, it's, right. Actually, it's paid online. Like, you know, you order online, whether they're groceries or not, but the liquor, they order, whatever they order online, they pay for it, then they drive up to the front of the building, or maybe they have a side door. I'm not sure how Walmart versus Meyer does this. But the customer is not walking into the store. It's not like, necessarily like a pharmacy drive-through where they've got a window, they open it, and they provide you your prescriptions. This is, they just walk it out to your car.
Okay, so there is no delivery to any place off-premise?
No. And this requires that the delivery has to occur on the property of the person, whether they're a tenant or an owner of the property, who has the liquor license.
Okay.
They can't walk to the sidewalk as you slow down and they deliver it to you. You have to enter onto, the customer has to drive onto the premises, onto the parcel of property owned or leased by the license holder.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Ann?
So I'm just curious, do we have any grocery delivery services in champagne in Urbana? I'm not aware of any, but, you know, Pea Pods is a, Schnucks does it? So how does this cover that?
It wouldn't, because.
It doesn't cover it? So you couldn't order alcohol and have it delivered to your house?
Right. Because they would be delivering off of their parcel of property, off the license. If it's Schnucks, let's say, let's stick with Meyer and Walmart, because they're the ones I'm aware of. If it's Walmart or Meyer, from whom the liquor is ordered, if they bring that to somebody's residence or their, their office, let's say, so they can take it home, that would be delivering it off of the licensed premises.
All right, thank you.
So to clarify, just to make sure we're all on the same page, what we're voting on is an amendment to the code that says "on the premises" as well as "in the premises."
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
I'll motion it.
I'll second.
And that is a motion to send ordinance number 2017-06-025 to council with a recommendation for approval that was moved by Dean Hazen of Ward 6, and approved by Eric Jacobson of Ward 2. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, ayes have it. Thank you. Number 11 is ordinance number 2017-06-026, an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2017-2018 annual budget. A question just jumped into my head, I don't remember as it relates to Mike and his, his service here, even at the committee, the whole, and we doing a, a voice vote, the fact that Jared recused himself just simply means that he's not in it. We don't need to do a roll call just because he was, okay, I just wanted to make sure it's something that jumped in my head there. Okay. All right, so finance.
All right, so I have a total of three ordinance.
All right. So I have a total of three ordinances here, but the first one would approve the fiscal 2018 annual budget. So the budget that would be approved is exactly what was in your proposed budget document with the changes listed in the attachment to the ordinance. And maybe just a couple of those worth pointing out. There's a correction of a couple of data entry errors, the reduction in the parking meter fees related to delaying that increase. But the rest of them are, for the most part, just issues of timing of when things are going to happen, or just sort of a technical matter. For example, for the retained risk fund transferred to capital improvement fund, that's for the fire station exhaust system. We just thought it was more appropriate rather than showing that expense in retained risk to transfer it and show the expense in the capital improvement fund. So this is a, for a budget ordinance, this is a relatively small list of changes.
All right, any questions? All right, so I am, now do I need to wait, Charlie, or do this now?
You probably want to turn the chair over.
Okay. So Eric, would you please take the chair?
I'll take the chair and recognize Mr. Ammons.
Thank you, sir. I am asking for a separation in this budget. I would like to separate the proposed increase for the EDC, which is, I believe, in the tune of $9,600. I do not believe that this is, it's the time for us to do an increase. We had, we're talking about, you know, possible layoffs and all kind of different stuff. I do not think that an increase to EDC at this particular point, even given in the vein of the conversation we just had about most of the social service cuts that we've taken, I do not support an increase for, of $9,600 to the EDC. I'd like for that item to be separated from the budget.
I would second that for purpose of discussion.
Okay. So what's the procedure, Charlie? Can, can, can we now discuss that?
You could talk about it, but if you, you know, the appropriate, the easiest thing mechanically is.
Do the amendment?
Is to do the amendment. So.
That's fine.
Yeah, and because then it's just one clean document rather than having to do parts. That's all. It's convenient for, more convenient for staff, easier to manage.
So you're suggesting that instead of making this discussion be completely separate, that we simply amend, that we entertain a motion to amend the budget to, the budget item for EDC and discuss that separately?
Correct, yeah. Zeroing out that $9,600 increase.
So is that acceptable to you, Aaron?
I guess I'd have to wait to see how the vote turns out, because my position is that if it stays in there, then I'm not voting for the budget.
Yeah, well, I think.
Well, I'm voting no, I should say. I'll be voting for.
Okay. But I guess the end result would be the same, no matter how we do the procedure. But yes, Bill?
Yeah, I guess if, if Aaron's going to vote no, and we need a certain number of votes for the budget, I'd rather do it by dividing the question. And the other concern is if he offers the amendment and no one seconds it, we won't be able to discuss it. So in some ways, maybe dividing the question would be better.
Okay. So, so I guess the motion on the floor is to divide the question. So is it, and we've, we've had a little back and forth with the clerk about the logistics of that. So, but we have a motion on the floor. So I guess, and since I'm temporarily presiding, I guess I'll, yes, Aaron?
We could go into an emergency closed session and do a straw poll.
No.
No.
I'm just messing with you.
No, I don't think this qualifies under the state law for a closed session.
All right.
So, so I guess I'll call for a vote. Who will, all those who, and I don't think we need a poll.
You're doing a move to separate, so you can do a voice vote.
We can do a voice vote. So will all those who are in favor of separating, please signify by saying, by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, ayes have it. So we're separating the question. Now, Charlie, should we, is it in order to proceed with this separate question at this time?
Yeah, you've, you've got two separate, it'll create two separate ordinances, essentially.
Okay, so let's, so I guess the floor is open to discuss specifically the budget item for the EDC. Yes, legal, okay.
You are entering a conundrum.
Okay.
Because what you are doing effectively, of course, you haven't approved this budget. So you can't amend a budget that you haven't approved.
Right.
You can, somebody can move to strike the funding, period, and that, because you haven't adopted the budget. But if you adopt the budget as it's written, as Elizabeth is presenting it, all you need, well, here, all you need is, you don't, you're not taking action tonight. You're just moving it on to council. So you only need a majority vote. But when it gets to council, when you go to approve this budget, let's assume you approve it in full, it only requires a majority vote. But if you, well, yeah, majority, majority of the corporate authorities, not of the council, but of the corporate authorities, which is defined as the mayor, and the alderpersons on the council. If you then go to amend the budget to delete or somehow modify this particular line, you can do that. But that's going to require a two-thirds vote, because you are now amending the budget.
So I think I got a little clarity out of that. What, what I'm, what I'm, what I understood you to say is if we pass the budget with a simple majority at council next week, it would take a super majority to delete an item?
Or add an item. Anytime you amend the budget, once it's passed, that requires the super majority you're referring to, yes.
So I, it's not my intention here this evening to make this a difficult thing. I thought it was just a simple separation. We vote on two different things and we move on. So what is the simplest process? You know, you said it was just to make the amendment, but the amendment sounds to me to be more, more daunting of a task.
No.
Well, you can, you can always ask me to amend the ordinance before we send it back for approval next week. So I've got a list of changes here. I could add one more change to that list. But I do think I have to have one budget ordinance, and only one budget ordinance.
To go, to go to council. So effectively, what we're discussing right now, if I understand this correctly, Charlie, what we're discussing, what we're discussing right now is whether, I mean, maybe there'll be other items on the budget people want to talk about, but what we're discussing right now is whether the budget that goes to council next week will have this $9,600 in it or not.
Like I said earlier, the cleanest way to do this, because of the, the legal need for a single budget document that gets filed with the county clerk, you should amend the budget ordinance, amend the budget to the amounts that you want, and send those to council.
And amending the budget in committee of the whole just requires a majority.
Well, no, you can, if you were to do the amendment, if you do the amendments before you approve the ordinance next week.
Yeah.
It has the same effect as amending it with a simple majority.
So you're, you're not actually amending the budget, you're amending the ordinance that approves the budget, which is different.
Okay. And that has to be done before the final budget vote. You can amend the document, as Elizabeth said, the ordinance. But once you approve a budget, any amendment of any kind after that requires the super majority.
So we could have a discussion right now about whether or not we want that increase to be there. Take a vote, and then you'll have clear direction as far as the ordinance that we will vote on. And then we can vote on that ordinance and move it to council, right?
Yes, if you direct me to make a change, I'll give you a revised ordinance next week.
Okay. So now what is the parliamentary process for us to get off the table, what is on the table?
Well, I think, yeah, I think what's, what's here now is the, is this separate discussion about this one item in the budget. And I think we should discuss that now and, and decide, you know, by a majority vote at this stage in the process, how we feel about that.
Charlie?
Well, the issue is, is that right now you have, you've approved a move to separate here, so we need to undo that. And I'm going to have to ask Jim how you, I don't know how we undo that. We're just.
Vote on it and it dies, right?
Well, you, I think you voted on it by voice vote. So somebody who, and I don't know if, I don't remember whether it was unanimous or not, but somebody who voted for it should, should move to repeal that vote, that seconded, and then you vote.
Can we start from scratch? Move to reconsider?
Second.
Or move to reconsider.
And I think I'm still presiding, so.
No, you're not. I took it back.
Oh, did you take it back? Okay.
It sounded like you were still presiding, though. It was, all right, so.
Because I was being neutral.
You, you were doing a good job, too. All right, so move to reconsider by, by Bill Brown, second by Mary Alice Wu. We got that? We, or did Dean second it? Did I miss something? No. So, all right, so all in favor of the reconsider, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so now we're back with a blank slate. And I am opening up for discussion, the change. I do not, I am asking, well, I don't know if I should ask directly. Go ahead.
Again, you need to have Eric take the chair, and you need to make a motion to, you should make him, yeah, Eric takes the chair, and you should make a motion to amend the budget document, striking the part that you don't like.
All right. Would you please take the chair?
Okay. I'm taking the chair, and the budget ordinance is.
Are you going to give it back, man?
What?
Are you going to give the chair back, if I give it to you this time?
I will give the chair back when, when you are prepared to preside, yes, as opposed to advocate.
All right. So my motion is to zero out the $9,600 increase for EDC.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I think Elizabeth wanted to say something.
I just wanted to clarify. I think what you want to do, if you want to keep the EDC contribution at the same level as for this year, yes, you want to decrease it by $9,588 from what was in the proposed budget.
Okay. Okay, so that is my motion to decrease the proposed allotment for EDC, to decrease it by $9,588 for the 2017-2018 budget. That is my motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded, is open for discussion. And, yes, Mr. Brown?
So I remember, so it looks like we budgeted $28,000, is that right? Yeah, $28,763. And that's up over the last couple of years, but I think when I first came on, it got a pretty big cut before that. Do you remember how much it was earlier than 2015?
Yes, Mary Ellen.
It was approximately $38,000, equivalent to the city's population at the time. And I don't know where that number came from, but that's what it was based on.
So we're only making up about half of that difference?
Yes, it was, it was cut in half several years ago to $19,000. And considering the amount of time we've drawn on the expertise from the EDC recently, I think it's well worth the increase, as well as our emphasis on growth and development in the city. We intend to utilize the organization much more than we have in the past.
And do you know how much Champagne's contribution is?
I don't have their budget with me. The university has given, I know the university has given 75. Champagne's is much, much higher than Urbana's. I can, I can send that information around to the council.
Yes, Mary Annis?
So I'm curious, the, so the, the thought was to increase the amount of money provided to EDC based on previous years. But at the same time, the UBA, I'm just wondering how that conversation, how that thought process went. So we've decreased UBA and we're increasing EDC. So if you could provide some insight on that?
Well, we're giving UBA about $58,000 plus office space. So the, the support that the city provides to the UBA through the general fund and the TIF district is considerably more than the EDC. And like I said, the EDC has been extremely helpful in a number of discussions lately on economic development projects, plus the support they provide directly to small businesses in the city and entrepreneurs. So, so if you're going to evaluate the two, I, I would, I would advocate that they at least be closer in support in equal amounts. So, but in, in general, I really, really value the contributions of the Champaign County Economic Development Corporation in terms of direct support for businesses and direct usefulness to city staff, and to supplement our own economic development efforts.
Yes.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Do you know what they plan to do with the additional money?
The EDC, yeah, it's, it's operations, it's administration, and it's direct services to businesses.
Right. But, I mean, we've been funding them for about $20,000 for the past two years. So if we increase it, I'm just going to use round numbers, by 10 grand. So we're increasing it by 50%.
Well, we've kind of been, I won't use the term, I'm not, well, I won't use that term at all. Other agencies who support the EDC, Champaign County, the city of Champaign, the University of Illinois, other communities, Rand Tool, all contribute to the EDC. Our contribution is lower relative to our population than the rest of the, the entities, other than the county, for example. But, but we, when we cut back our contribution, other people took up the slack, other agencies took up the slack.
So does that mean that they'll get their, they'll decrease their contribution, like the city campaign?
No.
I'm just trying to figure out, like, what, what's the plan for the money? You know what I mean? Like, are they going to hire a new person? Are they going to?
They've actually cut their staff. They've cut, they're down one staff member.
So the plan would be to then partially fund replacement?
I don't think they'll be hiring a new staff member right away, but they could be, yeah. It's, 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 it's bringing our contribution back up to at least what it was from several years ago.
I think I saw some sign of motion from Mr. Miller.
Indeed, you did. How much, how much is this for? $6,000 or just below?
We currently are funding them at around $19,175, and it would be for an increase of $9,600.
Okay, so it's just below $9,600. Is that a, is that a make or break for their organization as far as what they're able to accomplish? I mean, are they just going to go down in a fire if we don't?
They will not go out of business.
Okay.
Bill?
Yeah, I just think it's more of a, a matter of doing our share with the other organizations in the county. They're funding EDC. They do a lot of work in attracting regional businesses, and they put together a lot of data about Champaign County that helps us attract those kinds of businesses. I don't, I can't point to any particular successes they have, maybe Diane can. But I know that if they had one, one success in that, on that scale, would definitely make up much more than, you know, years of our contributions. So I think that it's, it's in our interest to fund them appropriately. And I don't know, you know, if they would give us any less service, because they know that we aren't funding them at the same level of other cities. But I could see them not going out of their way to do more for us. And potentially, I could see them sliding us if there was an option. So I think, you know, just in the interest of fairness, we should try to increase our funding. And still, it'll be down $10,000 from what it was five years ago.
Jared?
Bill, that brings up an interesting point that I was going to ask that I forgot. But maybe Diane can tell us whether or not they've had particular impacts and then. maybe Diane can tell us whether or not they've had particular impacts in the City of Urbana. I mean, I understand the message that economic development was saying, you know, we're all in this together, the promotion of our sister city and all of Champagne County affects, affects Urbana as well, but we're elected to represent the interests of the City of Urbana itself.
Well, yeah, I mean, just in the last week, they sent, and I'm not sure how much information I can provide at this point, but they sent a very good lead to the City of Urbana for a tech, another tech company to, or a small tech outfit to locate here, so, so they're also a source of leads for, hey, if you want a place to, to set up shop, they, they supply those as well, so they're constantly doing that. You might also have been aware of the "You're Welcome" marketing campaign, which you see in the community, that was led in part by Carly McCrory from the EDC. They do the innovation celebration, which is the, celebrates the tech community, tech sector. They, as I said, they were very, very active in the effort to bring another airline into Willard Airport, they have been active in the Champagne County First Effort, High Speed Rail. They're, the focus on this regional economic development outfit is, is, is just that, it's outward-facing, and when you, and UBA is very much Urbana-focused, and mostly downtown-focused, and on a smaller scale, so, so you need, you know, you need both efforts. The other thing is, we have had two positions on their board, when we cut our contribution in half, they let us keep two positions on the board, but there was quite a bit of discussion about why Urbana got, got two board members for half the amount of funding, and I suspect that if, if, if this doesn't go through, we'll probably be down to one member of the board, which, you know, determines policy at the, at the organization. But I, you know, I've seen them, if you wanna look at what the impact of EDC is, look at Main Street Urbana. Most of the folks in COLAB, and in this new coworking space that's just opened up on the second floor on Main Street, those people go through counseling through the Small Business Development Center, and the International Trade Center is just an enormously valuable resource, so, that's the kind of things that are, that are based in EDC, and our money goes to support, now that's, you know, the Trade Center has a separate source of funding, the Small Business Development Center funded through the State of Illinois, but, but they have to be housed somewhere, so if you ask where our contribution goes, it's paying for the space, the rent, the phone, the, the office, the administrative support, and that's, that's what it does, and, and, you know, we went through the sort of same discussion when the Visit Champagne County funding was just cut completely a few years ago, and it took several years for us to get just a minimal of ten thousand dollars back. For, for several years, we weren't part of, of any of the regional tourism efforts, and you, you know, you're not gonna make it in this day and age without regional collaboration. That's the bottom line.
Now, Jared?
Does the, do either the SBDC or the parent organization employ Urbana citizens? Or do they have offices or anything in Urbana?
No, their offices are in Champagne, but they, they work for and help Champagne County businesses, and many of those are located in Urbana, and individuals are located in Urbana.
So, if, if there's no other comments, if I may comment? I think, Mary Alice?
I was gonna have one final comment, sorry.
Sure, sorry.
You know, I, I think that one of the things that I learned about this budget, and Diane, you were very generous with your time, and Elizabeth was very generous with her time, as were some of the people from the Police Department, it, it's a little confusing, right? There's lots of ups and downs, and, and I went through this whole thing, and I kind of highlighted things that I thought were big increases, and a lot of you guys were able to answer those questions for me, so, thank you. It sounds to me like this is, this is one that's like actually truly an increase, there's no budget, you know, moving around between funds, and there's, there's no increase in the percentage time that people are working and so forth, which is what a lot of the stuff was before. I think that having economic development and having people who are focused on that, both at the regional level and at the local level, are, are very important. What I am hesitant about is giving somebody such a large increase during a time in which we are really trying to hold the line during budgets. So, I'm not saying that, that they wouldn't deserve a better contribution, what I'm saying is, can the city truly afford to be giving such a large increase during this time? So, that, that's kind of where I'm coming from on this.
Okay, if I, if I may, then, okay, Aaron, would you take the chair back, please? Oh, okay, Bill, would you take the chair?
Third string, huh? Okay. I recognize Eric.
So, I will, I will support the higher number. I think that, I think the relationship with EDC is, is extremely important, I think it's hard to, we have to put a dollar value on it, and yet it's hard to quantify, but it's the kind of thing where, which, if, if they, if they're competing, if there's competition for the time or the attention of EDC staff, if they have five calls to answer, and ours is one of them, will we ever get a call back? It's, it's really a, it's really a working relationship that we're supporting with this budget item, and it's just an extremely important working relationship to the city economically, and also in, in the quality of life. We, we heard a specific item, the EDC put us, put Frasca onto a more efficient international distribution system for their flight simulators, which supported actually adding jobs at Frasca. That in itself was probably worth a lot to the city, so, I, I, I think this is a matter of building, or in some sense repairing, relationships with other entities in our region, that in some ways we're competitive with the City of Champagne, in some ways we need to cooperate, and the business, and the idea of bringing businesses into our region, or supporting businesses in our region, is an area where we need to cooperate, and where, in my opinion, we need to invest in that cooperation, and I think this increase is a statement that, that we value that, and I think we need to do it.
And, Aaron?
Yeah, so, look, I have a firm understanding and a growing understanding of the importance of business in our community, the tax base, and all of that, and, so, I'm supportive of small businesses, I, I don't, I don't have an issue with that, but what we're talking about is a fifty percent increase, which is an actual increase, that doesn't have a real quantitative value, no presentation to say, hey, this is what we need this for, this was just a line item that I would logically conclude that was proposed by the mayor, because she's so excited about the EDC, for whatever reason. And yet, during this time where we're, we're trying to hold the line, so to speak, and to my knowledge, I haven't seen the EDC come here and do a presentation to us since I've been here, maybe I'm wrong, they did?
They've been here, yeah. Would you like them to come next week?
Well, I think everybody else that's been coming and asking for money is coming to say, hey, look, this is what the value that we bring, so I don't see why that should be any different, and what it feels like to me is that this entity appears to be, or is seen to be so important by everyone that we have to pay for membership as, as a part of their board, that's somewhat concerning to me, if they are concerned with economic development in the region, then whether or not they get a penny from us or not, then they should still be concerned about economic development in the region, and so to say things like, well, if we don't pay them enough, they won't return our phone calls, or we won't have a person at the, at the board, that's, that's, I mean, that's borderline some sort of pay-to-play politics that I don't think that we want to engage in, right? So, I just, I find that troubling. Mayor, you referred to the rest of the other entities picking up the slack when we had to decrease the funding, yet there's no actual, as Mary Alice pointed out, are they gonna decrease by ninety-three-hundred dollars? And when I look around at economic development in our community, I'm, I'm looking at our own economic development department and saying, okay, we see lots of small businesses and things like that, but we've been talking about whether it's, you know, at my meetings for my neighborhood, talking about Golden Corral, or some other larger employer that actually creates a, a job opportunity, and most of the growth that we see, I think collectively, is in, is on the other side of Wright Street. So, I don't know if the EDC has actually been, has a clear value that it's adding for Urbana in the way, for instance, that the UBA is supposed to do, so I'm just concerned about that, I'm not saying we shouldn't have a working relationship with them, I agree with that, but to say that we're gonna increase their funding by fifty percent without even a direct, I don't, did they ask for some more money, or did we just decide to give it to them?
I, this is the budget that I am proposing, and I'm proposing this increase, based on my experience and observation, and commitment to economic growth and development in Urbana, going forward.
And, I guess, to be transparent in your relationship with the EDC, right?
Yeah, I've served on, I've served as the city council representative to the EDC Board for the past four or five years. Charlie was the predecessor for that.
Mary Alice?
So, I'm curious, and, and Aaron, I'm not sure if this is addressed as part of, you know, talking about, you know, paying for seats on the council, my assumption is, these are operating funds, that's what I heard you say, that the money that we would be contributing, this is to keep the doors open, this is to have the people do the work, so it's not necessarily that in order to, we're paying this money so that we can have a seat behind the desk, so to speak, it's, it's supposed to have people doing the work, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, one thing I like about what I've heard tonight is the fact that they focus on international markets, I think that, that's good, that's great to, to get information out there, and that seems to be like a niche of one of the things that they fill that other, other economic development groups that we have don't fill, is that, is that correct as well?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, I think, I think I have a better understanding, a little bit better understanding of, of where the funds would go and, and who does what, thank you.
I will return the chair to someone, Eric?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll take the chair in case, in case, for example, Bill or Aaron or anybody wants to speak some more, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, just one more point, I'm, I'm pretty sure they also do retention visits, is that right? To some of the larger employer, employers, so when you think about economic development, you should think about not just what we have to gain, but also what we have to lose, we have some big employers like Super Value, Creative Thermal, Dark Container, some of whom pay pretty good salaries, probably better than Golden Corral would pay, so, I think, you know, one retention visit with a high-tech company like Creative Thermal that employs hundreds of people, or Super Value that pays, that employs hundreds of people, that could keep a, a company like that operating and healthy, rather than thinking about moving or closing, I think is well worth nine thousand dollars.
Are there other comments? You know, I guess that, are we ready for a vote? And I guess, I don't know if I should pass the chair back to Aaron to preside over the vote, or shall I just...
You, you have to preside over the votes, his motion.
It's Aaron's motion, okay. So, and the motion on the floor is to, is to cut the contribution to the, the EDC by the amount by which it was raised over the previous year, so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
I think the nays have it, if I'm hearing right, does anybody, unless there's a call for, okay, okay, I think the motion is, is defeated, and I'll turn the chair back to Mr. Emmons.
Thank you very much, sir, appreciate it. Alright, so we are at ordinance number 2017-06-026, and ordinance approving the fiscal year 2017-2018 annual budget, it was presented by finance, is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second, this would be to send it to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll move, yes. To send to council with a recommendation for approval.
And I'll second that.
Alright, so it was moved by Jared Miller of Ward Seven, and second by Eric Jacobson of Ward Two, to go to council with a recommendation for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Alright, number twelve, ordinance number 2017-06-027, and ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for FY 2016-2017 fiscal year 2016-17 estimates, finance.
This is part two of your budget package here, so, you, you will have noticed, as you reviewed your budget documents, that we have a column entitled FY17 Budget, and one titled FY17 Estimate, so just as a matter of practice, we amend the budget at the end of the year to match those estimates. In, in some cases, those are, those estimates are, are lower than the budget, for example, where we did not spend money on snow and ice overtime, and, for example, fire department overtime is significantly, expected to be significantly less than budget. So, again, the attachment details the changes from what is in the budget document, they are relatively few, and mostly of a technical nature. One that you may not have been aware of is that we do include changes to close out the Metro Squad Fund, which is a cooperative venture with other police departments, and transfer those funds to the Village of Ranthool, who is now assuming responsibility for managing that.
Any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt this ordinance for the budget amendment. Now, this is just dash, dash, oh-two-seven, is that correct, Elizabeth? We're doing these separately?
Yeah, to send to council.
Yes.
Yeah, to send to council with a recommendation for approval, the one that ends with oh-two-seven.
Alright, so, ordinance number 2017-06-027 has been moved, a motion has been made to move to council with a recommendation for approval by Eric Jacobson, and second by Dean Hazen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, ayes have it. Number thirteen, ordinance number 2017-06-028, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 22-91 Food and Liquor Tax Finance.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
For my trifecta tonight, according to state liquor law, I also must recuse myself from voting on this particular amendment to the budget.
Alright, thank you, sir. So...
This is, this is part three of my trifecta in the budget ordinances, so this ordinance would amend the city code to increase the food and beverage tax from one percent to one-point-five percent, that is expected to generate three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand in revenue for next year's budget, which is necessary to balance the budget. It's getting late, I could go on a little bit more, but I think you've all read the memo.
Alright, so, any questions for Elizabeth? Dean?
Is Champagne's higher or lower than ours? I've had a little, I've had some different answers on that, and I wasn't able to find it today.
Champagne's lower, their food and beverage taxes, one-half of one percent, and also on the second page of the memo, I listed some other comparable cities, Bloomington, Normal, Decatur, and Peoria are all at two percent.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Alice?
So the, of the townships that are, have a larger amount, so two percent, Bloomington, Normal, Decatur and Peoria, do you know roughly when they increase those? Do you know if they've been in effect for a while? Has it been recent?
You know, I, I didn't research that specifically, but I think they've all been in place for a while now. I don't think it was like, for example, new within the past year, but I could find out for you.
I mean, it's interesting to me, it would be interesting to me to find out from them, A, when they did it and B, did they see any decline in the, not the amount that they're receiving, but rather the number of sales?
Yeah, I, I can tell you though, we increased our food and beverage tax from that one-half percent to one percent in twenty fifteen. And if you, you know, reduce that down to the underlying sales, we actually had an increase in the underlying sales the last time we increased the rate. No, I don't think they increased because we increased the rate, but it also didn't seem to have a significant negative impact.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? So you did, so Champaign is at point five, right? Is that what I heard you say?
Yes.
Okay. So Eric, would you please take the chair?
I'll be happy to take the chair and recognize Mr. Ammons.
Thank you very much. So this is one of the most regressive taxes that we could possibly pass or present. It is going to get passed on to the individuals who are at the New Burger King on University Avenue. Folks who are going out for beer at Crane Alley, you know. All of those, the low-income, mid-income type of folks are going to get hit really hard with this, with this increase. And then, of course, all I hear all the time is, what is Champaign doing? What is Champaign doing? And we don't wanna raise the, the parking meter rates on campus because Champaign is not really do it yet. But we're gonna put a food and liquor tax at a full percentage point higher than, than Champaign. All while we also just gave nine thousand, six hundred dollars to the EDC that they didn't need. So I do not support this regressive tax on the people, so I will be voting no.
Okay, and with that, I will gladly turn the chair back to you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, sir. Yes, ma'am, Mary Alice.
I'm wondering if the restaurants and the bar owners had been contacted and asked what they thought about this?
Um, we haven't, we did not contact them upfront. This was a pretty public issue. It was in the news. We did schedule the increase to start in August so that we would have time to notify them so that they can implement the change.
So have you heard from anybody based on the publicity? Has anybody contacted you and said, hey, wait a second?
I've had no comments and the mayor's shaking her head no.
I've had no comments.
Okay. So I will, I will move that we send twenty seventeen dash.
I'm sorry, what?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Thank you very, Eric. It's okay though.
Is it okay? I'm sorry.
We'll circle back to you eventually. You know, my, just as we close out here, I know you guys are gonna take this vote. But again, you know, we're talking about a twenty percent poverty rate in, in Champaign County and we're gonna do, or what's being proposed here is a, yet another tax on, that's gonna hit the poor, so the poor more than anybody else. So, you know, I want you guys to think about that as you're taking these votes. All right, so Bill?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the data on that. It's for food and beverages purchased at restaurants. So it wouldn't include any kind of groceries or things like that. I don't know how regressive that is. I assume the more expensive the restaurant is, the more you're gonna be paying. But obviously everyone eats out at restaurants and it's definitely not progressive. But I guess my question would be, if not that, then what are the other options? Where, where can you cut three hundred and ninety thousand dollars from the budget? Or where you can, where can you raise that money that would be less regressive?
And it's alcoholic beverages.
Oh, do I still have the chair? Okay.
No, no, I was, I thought she was just asking in general for somebody else to respond. Go ahead, Dean.
Thank you. I think it will be interesting to see when it comes to liquor sales, if that price is absorbed by the bar owner or by the customer. Because a lot of times when you buy a beer or you buy a drink, it's three bucks. The price of the tax is built into the drink. I'm not sure if they'll split that, if they'll, they'll eat some of that themselves and some will go to the consumer or not. Where food, it clearly will go to the consumer. I didn't ask about Champaign because I'm trying to play a one, one-upsmanship with them. In fact, I think that's problematic, the way we feed back and forth off each other like that. I ask about them because I don't wanna lose a competitive edge with them, as Eric had said in a previous meeting. I don't want it to become a situation where somebody would actually say, I'm not gonna buy a drink in Urbana, I'll go across Wright Street because it's cheaper. I don't think we're to that point yet, though. So I will reluctantly support it because generally I don't like to support any tax increases. But I know that we're kind of in a corner and we have to do something. The solutions I have in mind are all long-term solutions and I know that we need some short-term help. So that's, I've spoken my piece on it, so.
Well, you know, one of the things that, as we talk about these, where this money comes from, I said to, to this council, a couple of you, a few of you were not here though, when you all approved the two hundred thousand dollar increase to the police department, that we're gonna have to do some things that you did not want, that I certainly didn't agree with. So now we're talking about where does the money come from? Well, it could have been saved, you know, last year instead of voting for an increase to the police officers in the middle of the year that we knew we didn't have the money to do. So, you know, now these are the things that we have to put on the backs of the people. So, you know, whatever, the vote's gonna go down, you all, you know how I feel about it, so. Any further discussion? All right, so the ordinance that's on the table right now, twenty seventeen oh six oh two eight, ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter twenty-two ninety-one, food and liquor tax. It's been mov, has there been a motion?
I don't think there's been a motion yet, so I, I will.
Yes, sir.
If the chair will recognize me.
Yes, I will.
I will, I will move that ordinance to be sent to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
So it's been moved by Eric Jacobson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Dean Hazen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it. With no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned.